As Ms. Dugan approaches the microphone, I'd like to call the following speakers, please, after Ms. Dugan. Speaker number 22, Matthew Davis, and then Speaker 24, Namaka Unaka, followed by Speaker 25, please, India Jenkins.
Hi, my name is Gina Dugan. My daughter's a senior at Laintec High School. I'm here regarding CPS Policy Section 605.5, which requires that elementary grade school students taking high school level courses in a high school setting must take the course for credit and is not eligible for placement. My daughter attended an academic center and was required by CPS policy to accept credit for one class in 7th grade and five classes in 8th grade. She received As in all six of these honors classes. CPS policy then required, since she received credit, that these must be included in her high school GPA. It seems it should be a good policy, but it is not. She is a senior in high school now. She has been ranked number one until recently. She will have completed 13 AP classes in high school and has received all As. This year, her rank dropped to number three when reviewing her GPA. When you include her six classes from the academic center, it is a 5.2097. If you were just to include her classes from high school, her GPA would be a 5.26. She is no longer ranked number one, not because of her grades or because she didn't take enough AP classes, rather she lost her number one ranking because she was required to include grade school classes in her high school GPA. This policy should be rescinded so that my daughter and others similarly situated do not get penalized for attending academic centers. At graduation, she will be sitting in her seat, listening to a valedictorian speech from someone who has actually benefited by not attending an academic center. The previous board policy allowed placement in advanced high school courses and did not require the class be taken for credit. I submit to you that this is the better policy to have and request that such a policy be enacted immediately so that students this year can benefit from it. I doubt the purpose of the policy was to put academic center students at a disadvantage, which is what it has done. I have supplied to you a copy of her grades and calculations. If you look at that, her freshman year, including the academic center grades-
Ms. Dugan, can you please conclude, please?
Yes. Her freshman year, the academic center grades actually helped her GPA. Sophomore year, it did nothing, and junior and senior year, it actually penalized her. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Namaka Unaka, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Community Engagement for KIP Chicago. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. KIPPASAN Charter School has been serving Chicago families since we opened our doors in 2003. KIPPASAN is part of the National KIP Network of High-Performing Public Charter Schools. In the past 10 years, we have seen our KIPsters succeed both in and out of the classroom. To date, 87% of students who have finished 8th grade with us have gone to college. Our oldest alumni are currently sophomores in college, and we look forward to seeing them through to their graduation in the years to come. Our dedicated faculty have received many accolades, including the National KIP Excellence in Teaching Award, the Illinois Network of Charter Schools Teacher of the Year Award, and National Board Certification. Of course, we couldn't do this work without the support and partnership with our KIPsters' families. At KIP, we are a team and family. It takes students, parents, and teachers to prepare our KIPsters for college and beyond. With 10 years and 1,000 families behind us, we believe that KIP is a high-quality option for Chicago families, and we greatly appreciate your consideration of our charter renewal so we can continue to serve our incredible KIPsters and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, then will be Speaker number 26, please, Susanna Sandoval, followed by Speaker number 29, Ronald Alexander, and then Speaker number 30, Jennifer Carter, followed by Speaker number 31, Kareem Manuel, please.
Good afternoon, President Vitale and Board members. My name is Susanna Sandoval, and I will be attending these meetings fairly regularly as I've been chairing a design team in the Roslin area as a community member and an education advocate to provide an additional educational option in the Roslin area. So my design team members will be attending the next three meetings or attempting to attend them, depending on scheduling. I'd like to ask you all a question. How many of you actually have children that have had or currently have children that are schooled by the current school system of the city of Chicago?
I do, so that's good.
Okay. I, too, also have two children, as I shared in the previous meeting, I believe, in December. And as a community member and a former National Head Start Association member at the national city-state-regional-and-state level, I'm quite familiar with the scenario that's being presented right now in the school system. What we tend to forget are that these schools are not just facilities, they represent community centers, and that our schools represent—the numbers that you all see in reports represent children, not just seats in a school. And in Head Start, every time it comes up in the federal budget and renewal for its appropriation, we have the challenge of having to fight for a program that actually works for a majority of people in society. The idea that a community center should be a school and vice versa, I think, is something that the city of Chicago should embrace.
Ms. Sandoval, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, we'll be seeing you shortly, and I'll be glad to—I've been trying to attempt to schedule a meeting with your CEO, and I look forward to being able to partner with you, as well as any of the other people in this room, to actually have current solutions that involved community and parental engagement.
Ms. Sandoval, thank you for your comments, please. Our next speaker.
Ms. Sandoval, we do have officers. You can sign up for them and come down.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Ron Alexander. I am school community liaison for Dulles School of Excellence, which is located in the Willlin area, 630 Kane Drive. I support, at the school, the Willlin Safety Alliance, the Place Streets Program, and also Stanford Parent University. I was at the school six years before the turnaround. Just want to give you a little bit of background. During the six years before the turnaround, we had staff that wasn't ready for the day. We had staff members that wasn't on the same page. We had staff that didn't believe in the principal's vision for the school. The children wasn't challenged. We also had children that had an option not to learn. The culture and climate was also a challenge. Then came AUSL. I didn't know where I was getting myself into, but I was asked to join AUSL. And within that time of going through the rigorous training, which I call Boot Camp at AUSL, we started Dulles over from scratch, which started from the mission and vision of the school. After the mission and vision of the school, we then went into—went to work. Okay? We went to work informing Dulles as a new school. All staff members on the same page. We also had teachers learning what their classrooms would look like, what the hallways would look like, what entrance would look like. And you will see the change in the parents' faces, the change in the children's faces. Children are afraid to share their grades. Children are not afraid to—
Mr. Alexander, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say, in closing, and to the parents that have concerns about AUSL, if your children's school teachers do not know the school mission and vision, then they don't have one. AUSL have a mission and vision, and all staff members of AUSL schools know the school mission and vision.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
So I ask you not to stop what AUSL doing and continue this process with AUSL schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Carter. I am the mother of two preschoolers who will both be entering kindergarten next year. However, my kids are not twins. My biological son and adopted daughter are 10 months apart in age and will be in the same grade throughout their education. In 2010, CPS changed the rules for lottery school applications to allow biological twins and other higher-order multiples to be linked together during the lottery process. The policy states they must be from the same pregnancy. My children are siblings through adoption, so this rule very specifically excludes them. In addition to the twins policy, CPS also provides the sibling policy, which gives preference to the siblings of children who are already enrolled in a lottery school. Because my children are not biological twins, their kindergarten applications to lottery schools will not be linked together, and because my children are in the same grade, they cannot take advantage of the sibling policy until the first grade, when one is already enrolled. These two policies were put in place to help families avoid having to send their kids to separate schools. However, between these two policies, there is a black hole where families like mine will fall. These are families with siblings, either through birth, adoption, or marriage, who are born under 12 months apart and fall into the same grade due to their September 1st birthday cutoff for entering students. I understand that CPS and CTU are dealing with much bigger issues right now. However, I urge you not to ignore a problem that has a relatively simple solution. There may not be hundreds of families dealing with this situation in a given application year, but I assure you that there are many families like my own who are falling through the cracks of these two policies.
Ms. Carter, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I will conclude.
Thank you.
Please think for a moment how ridiculous it is that families like mine will be likely sending their same-grade siblings to separate schools during kindergarten year so that one year later, they can utilize the sibling policy to bring them back together again in the first grade. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. We'll have somebody take a look at the situation, okay? Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the next speaker approaches, Speaker number 31, Kareem Manuel. The next designated speakers are with the ASPIDA group, and it's Speaker number 34, Fernando Grillo, followed by Speaker 42, Anibal Tobias, followed by Speaker 35, Olivia Dilworth, please.
I can go now?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Kareem Manuel. I live on the west side of Chicago. I'm a CPS graduate and a leader with New Schools for Chicago. I worked with high school students all across the city, and I'm here today on their behalf. They're in school right now where they belong, but they asked me to deliver some letters to you that they wrote. They want you to know that all they want is a good school where they can learn to the best of their ability, a school that's safe emotionally and physically. All the politics don't matter to them. It could be a school that's been around for 100 years or a brand-new school, but it has to be a school that can teach them and support them and get them to and through college. Antoine Brewer says in his letter, "I was raised on the west side without a father or a mother. When I was eight years old, my mother went to jail. My five siblings and I were on our own for at least two months. Two of my older brothers started to follow my mother's footsteps by getting involved with gangs, selling and using drugs, and everybody started to do their own thing. Then one day, my grandmother took us into her home, but she was already taking care of her other adult kids and their kids, my cousins. Now that she had us two, it was hard for her to maintain a home, and this caused us to be evicted, and we lived in a motel." Later, he says, "I am on my way to college, but as you can see, it's been a rocky road. Still and all, I'd like to say thank you to the people who helped me reach this success, and it was wrong for anyone to assume that I didn't want to better for myself in this life. By obtaining a degree, I will have stunned most people, even myself, but I'm confident I will reach my long-term goal, and every student, regardless of their race, income, or background, should be given the same chance. Ladies and gentlemen, these young people cannot wait. Thank you for everything that you've already done to bring quality schools to our communities. It is very important that you continue. Please do not delay in opening the quality schools already approved for the 2013-2014 school year. Find them buildings as soon as possible. On behalf of the students, we say thank you," and I'll conclude with this. Semi Shields says, "Since 3rd grade living in North Lawndale, my parents let me know that if I wanted a chance at a quality education, I would have to work really hard and travel outside my neighborhood. They paid for a private education during my elementary years, but a private high school education was out of the question. I tried to test into a 7th and 8th grade program, but my score was too low, so I had to travel 30 minutes by car to the only quality school I can get to. We have done everything we can to make sure I get a good education, and now we need you, members of the Board, to do all that you can. Please open high-quality schools in areas that need them now. Every student in my neighborhood deserves the type of education I am now receiving, no matter what neighborhood we live in. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 34, Fernando Grillo, followed by Speaker 42, Anibal Tobias.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the Board, and Madam CEO. My name is Fernando Grillo. I am honored and humbled to serve as Chairman of the Board of Directors of ASPIDA, Inc. of Illinois, and to come before you this afternoon requesting your support and approval of our charter renewal application. Over the last year, ASPIDA has undertaken a self-imposed turnaround process. This initial phase of the turnaround has resulted in changes at every level of our charter network, including a completely reconstituted board, new network leadership, and new leadership at each of our schools. These changes were absolutely necessary to laying a new foundation for a culture of excellence, service, and accountability to our stakeholders and to responding to the social, emotional, and academic needs of the children that we serve. We are already starting to see the benefit of these changes reflected in our school culture and in our data. It is truly a new day at ASPIDA. ASPIDA has a 45-year proud tradition of serving and promoting leadership through education. We have the privilege and responsibility of serving 1,466 students in two high schools and a middle school that comprise our network. We serve a high percentage of children of poverty, English-language learners, and special education students, resulting in critical educational challenges. In addressing these challenges, we've expanded our strategic alliances with universities, corporate, and community partners, already resulting in significant benefits to our students. This afternoon, we request that the record reflect that ASPIDA accepts and supports the recommendation of CPS leadership and staff for the approval of our renewal charter application and the conditions contained therein. We respectfully request your approval. We look forward to working with you as we write the next chapter of our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias. Thanks for the work you're doing in this area.
I'm Anibal Tobias, and President of ASPIDA. I'm bringing your perspective from within ASPIDA, that is, the parents, the staff, principals, administrators, and most importantly, the students. This year has brought a lot of exciting changes at ASPIDA. Some of it's been reflected in class sizes, the smiles of students, parents, teachers, what others show up in data, from disappearing teacher turnover to an uptick, significant uptick, on student retention, maturation, and learning gain. As we all know, it takes a lot more than a year. We have been at it a few months. My vision for ASPIDA is not for alignment to a political or social philosophy, nor to make friends. It is just to operate schools. ASPIDA develops contributing members of society. In other words, good citizens. ASPIDA has reason to be proud of persistently servicing the least privileged, and we will continue to do so. We realize that ASPIDA must now improve on academic achievements, accountability, perseverance, and tenacity, and now believe, actually, we know to have the tools, the right tools, to do this. Now, that includes, like, life-applicable courses. We're projecting advanced placement courses to go along with our dual college and high school credits, language immersion, and addressing social, economical needs that had not been addressed to the level that they should have been addressed earlier.
Mr. Tobias, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay.
Thank you.
What do I seek from you? First, let the record show that we endorse CPS's findings. They were fair and appropriate. Second, we look for active support of our implementation of integrated curricula from the 6th grade to the 12th grade. We think that makes a big difference. And finally, the expedited finalization of the appropriate metrics to demonstrate accountability for performance. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 35, Olivia Dilworth, followed by Speaker number 38, Eric Winslow, and then the group from the Roslin neighborhood have identified two designated speakers. Speaker number 46, Sandra Harad, followed by Speaker number 50, please, Seneca Noble.
My name is Eric Winslow. I currently work at Bryan Piccolo School of Excellence and AUSL School. I'm a member of the Culture and Climate Team. Prior to the year that I worked at Piccolo, before it was a turnaround school, I would describe the school as chaotic. Students did what they wanted to do. They walked out of classrooms. They roamed the building. There were food fights, and actually, there were big violent fights where students were actually expelled. Parents were fighting students, were fighting parents, students were fighting teaching. It was a sad place to pretty much work as a school. But this year, because of the turnaround that AUSL has, it was like a light has came on, and a new era had begun. We have the same students, and I'm going to repeat that, the same students there, but a different level of accountability. I attribute this to structure and high expectation and support to AUSL and to the principal. We began this year with Ms. Campbell, setting the tone, being firm and fair. She holds the students, staff, parents, and herself accountable for a productive environment. We were trained by AUSL over the summer and continue we were training throughout the year at both local and at no networks levels. We review situations and do strategy to improve our overall performance every year. We have set expectations for throughout school, from far as lunchroom, from inside auditorium, the classroom, hallways, washrooms, and so forth like that. So we set the expectation for the kids so that they remain at a level zero. The strategy of AUSL demonstrates a community to teaching and learning.
Mr. Winslow, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
I will conclude with this. With our current climate and construction setting, our math and achievement data has increased from August 2012 to January 2013. Over 74% of our students met or exceeded our target in reading, and over 87% growth in math at AUSL Network. It's second highest in growth in reading in AUSL and the highest in math at ASL. Thank you.
As the next group approaches, Sandra Harad, Speaker 46, and Speaker 50, Seneca Noble, they will be followed by Speaker number 43, please, Rick Barnes, and then Speaker number 47, please, Noreen Guttenkast, and then Speaker number 52, please, Barbara Higgins.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Harad, and I am from the Roslin community. I thank you for letting me speak today. I am here on behalf of the Roslin community. It was voted that they have chartered school there. They got the school, now we need a building, and we're hoping that you guys will vote on that, and we need it now. I do have a 4th grade student that attends a charter school that's not in the Roslin neighborhood, but I'm in the Roslin neighborhood. I have to go out of my way to get my daughter to and from school. It would be nice to have a school in our neighborhood, and I thank you, and please remember us on the day for our building.
All right, Ms. Harad, thank you.
Hi, my name is Seneca Noble. I'm a mother of three. I have a 20-year-old, a 14-year-old, and a soon-to-be 13-year-old.
Could you speak a little bit more into the microphone? I have a little trouble here.
Oh, sorry. Two of my youngest two do go to the CPS school. I'm also a parent, leader with the New School of Chicago. I'm here today because I'm fed up with the education my children and the kids in Roslin have been receiving. I see a lack of priorities for their education on their part as a school teacher and administration. Prior to moving back to Roslin, my children attended schools in a different area, which is the suburb of DuPage County. While they came back, they hit with the top-performing schools. When they came back, I see the lack of their grades going down the drain. Now, they have to sit in the boarding class, learn things that they already learned like a year or two grades before. They are now receiving the learning inability, and this is serious impact on their future. I never imagined that my own children and the kids in Roslin would have to be subjected to the type of inferior education they are receiving in Roslin. Something has to be changed.
Ms. Noble, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
Something has to be done, and it needs to be done now. I hope that the current changes happen in the school system with your effort to bring a quality school option like the Chicago Collegiate into Roslin. This is hope. This is a hope. While collegiate's approved, the school needs a place to operate. If you are committed to break the cycle, you would get Roslin more of what is needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
As Speaker number 47 approaches, Noreen Guttenkast. The next speakers then will be the designated speaker for the Oglesby Montessori Group, Speaker number 48, Yvette Bridgman, followed by Speaker number 51, please, Norman Ruano, and then we have—to identify a designated speaker for the Illinois Caucus for Adolescent Health, and the other designated speaker for that group is Speaker number 59, please, Caterine Nellis.
Good afternoon. As a representative of the 28,000 CTU members who work in our 600 schools, I've attended many of the over 30 hearings and network meetings that have been held since CPS announced that they wish to close down over 100 of our schools, all of which are virtually—virtually all of which in the African-American neighborhoods of our city. Over 20,000 parents, teachers, and students have attended these hearings, making this a tremendous exercise in democracy. They say to a person, "Our schools are fundamental community institutions. We value them. We invest in them, and they should be supported, not defunded and shut down." Today's board meeting is an ironic contrast to these massive meetings of Chicago parents. First, this meeting is held at a time that parents, students, and children cannot attend. What's even more remarkable is that you, the unelected members of the Chicago Board of Education, have decided that next month's board meeting, which was scheduled to be held during our spring break, has instead been pushed to a week later, precisely making it impossible for the parents, students, and teachers who would have been able to attend to be there. My conclusion is that you are afraid to hear from the people that you have been appointed to represent. Finally, on today's agenda, you will vote on the renewal of a number of charter organizations, including UNO. You've already announced your intention to open new charters, even as you move forward on closing down our existing neighborhood schools, despite our community's demands. We are stunned that CPS leadership would ignore the recent revelations about UNO and would today recommend that you approve an unconditional five-year renewal.
Ms. Guttenkast, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Investigations into UNO's business practices are ongoing, including the organization's own internal review. To grant a renewal before the results of any investigations are in is reckless. There are scandals about UNO funneling millions of Illinois taxpayer dollars toward the businesses of family members of their executives and of politicians who have championed UNO. There are unsustainably high levels of debt carried by UNO, and given the appearance of fiscal improprieties that cry out for investigation and caution, and the possibility that they have been in violation of their charter agreement with CPS, I call on you to either not renew or only conditionally renew UNO's charter pending investigation into their fiscal practices. Thank you.
Ms. Guttenkast, thank you for your comments today. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 52, Barbara Huggins.
Good afternoon. As a longtime Roslin community resident, it deeply touches my heart to see the condition of our schools, which is why we have decided to vote a charter school into our community. Currently, you can ask many Roslin children, "What did you learn today?", and it is very angry to hear them say nothing, when you know that that is very much true. We've asked for a charter school to come, and it has been approved. The Chicago Collegiate Charter School is just looking for a building. So we now ask that you approve the building for them so that we can give hope and change in our children. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Vitale and Board members. My name is Yvette Bridgman. I am a parent of two girls in a CPS school in Inglewood-Gresham area. I want to say thank you for your support for the Oglesby Public Montessori School. I want to say thank you for visiting, Mr. Vitale and Ms. Zoep, for coming in, and it meant a lot, not just to the parents, but to the childrens as well. Mr. Vitale, when you showed up with your invitation in hand—
Mr. Vitaleti, when you showed up with your invitation in hand and provided to my daughter Precious, that was the effort where met with success. She was so excited that you came out and showed her that you had the paper that she wrote. She was- she talked about it for at least two weeks after the fact. So I really do appreciate that, and you taking time out of your time for that. Okay, then, okay, we have two goals for next year. We need an upper elementary class so Precious and her third grade graders can continue with Montessori. And we also need a second primary class because we have a waiting list for a lot of parents that wants to put their kids in Montessori. So if you have the opportunity to think about it and, you know, give us that because we can really use your appreciation and your goals and everything that y'all want for school to go towards the Montessori. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for advocating for your daughter and the rest of the school and say hello to Precious.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ymani Hernandez, and I'm here with Juan Chavez, who is a youth leader at Illinois Caucus for Adolescent Health. I'm here both as the Executive Director of Illinois Caucus for Adolescent Health and also as the Chair of the Illinois State Board of Education Committee on the Critical Health Issues and Comprehensive Health Education Act. Today, I want to express my sincere support, extreme pride, and deep gratitude to Chicago Public Schools in amending the sexual health education policy to align with the first-ever national sexuality education standards. This is urgent. Thank you for acknowledging and responding to the staggering statistics that Dr. White mentioned earlier in the meeting. Amending this policy within a year of the release of the standards and working with advocates and educators throughout the city instills a sense of confidence and faith that Chicago Public Schools is capable of living up to its motto of putting children first. This policy amendment gets the closest to what young people need as they pursue safety, affirmation, and health. I congratulate the Office of Student Health and Wellness, and in particular, Ira Roundsville, Student Health Specialist, who we work most closely with, on a job well done. We look forward to continuing our work with youth and their adult allies at the school, district, and state level to reconcile health disparities by implementing comprehensive sexual health education. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Ms. Nellis approaches, the microphone President Vitaleti, the last two speakers, then will be Speaker number fifty-eight, please, David Ireland, followed by Speaker sixty, Carol Lee.
Members of the board, thank you so much for letting me speak to you today. My name is Kateri Gasti O'Nealis, and I am with Communities and Schools of Chicago. I am the Health Promotion Partnership Specialist and a Program Manager for a Comprehensive Sex Education Program. I am also a member of the CPS Health and Wellness Materials Review Committee and the Strategic Planning Committee. I am here today to support- to urge you to support the new comprehensive sexual health education policy. At Communities and Schools of Chicago, we help students achieve success academically through connecting students and their families with free programs and services that address students' unmet needs. Last year, we worked with more than a quarter of CPS schools and connected more than seventy thousand CPS students with free programming. The proposed sexual health education policy would make Chicago the largest urban U.S. school district to require a minimum of sexual health instructional minutes with specific indicators for grades two, five, eight, and twelve. As Dr. White said, the proposed changes are in part due to new national and local standards, including President Barack Obama's National HIV Strategy and Mayor Ramin Emanuel's Healthy Chicago Initiative. The statistics for why this policy is needed could go on and on, but they can't tell you what I've seen on a firsthand basis. I've had middle school through high school students ask me if boys can get pregnant. Girls have asked me if they can get pregnant through their mouths and why they get their periods. Boys want to know why their voices change during puberty. A principal with whom I've worked with has even told me that a male student, in all seriousness, screamed out that his uterus was hurting him. The national sexuality education standards, those that CPS would be aligning their policy with, present age-appropriate topics that progressively grow upon one another and increase the depth and complexity of the topics discussed as children develop into adolescence.
Ms. Nellis, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, there is a lot of confusion within our children regarding their sexual health. We need to provide our students with a better understanding of their bodies, their choices, healthy decision-making, HIV/AIDS, sexual identity, and bullying. I urge you to adopt the new comprehensive sexual health education policy. Thank you.
Using CPS comparative data, if you go to Dusable Leadership Academy, you're more likely to actually attend school. If you go to Dusable Leadership Academy, you're more likely than not to change schools. If you go to Dusable Leadership Academy, you're more likely to graduate. If you go to Dusable Leadership Academy, you're more likely to go to college. I'd like to thank the Board of Directors for taking the time to hear my comments today. I take ownership of the fact that at Dusable, our test scores have been low. We, like many other schools, are working to change that. We're working feverishly. We recognize the importance of test scores as indicators of success in college. However, this is one of only- this is only one of the many things that impact a student's future. If you look closely at our data, both at our high school and elementary, you'll notice several trends. Dropout rates are low, high school graduations are high, attendance rates are high, and college acceptance is high. Aren't those also indicators of effectiveness of a school? I'm new as a CEO of the network, and I took the reins in August, approximately two months prior to the site visits. We've implemented several things since then. One of the most recent and important things is our mentoring program. We've brought in four different mentoring programs to address things like tutoring, self-esteem, gang violence, and conflict resolution. We've also expanded our board members. We recognize that we need more resources. Our financials have been strong. Over the last sixteen years, we've had no financial institute- no financial problems. We do have a small financial problem now, that's with the ADA compliance, but we have a plan in place to address that.
Mr. Ireland, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
In the six years that our high school has been open, we've graduated two cohorts of seniors. In those two cohorts of seniors, there's a Gates Millennium Scholarship winner. I would be open to any discussion, any scenario, that allows Dusable Leadership Academy the opportunity to continue to grow and to develop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harad.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Carol Lee. I'm one of the founders and Chairman of the Board of Directors of Betty Shabazz. We appreciate the recommendation for the five-year renewal and encourage you to support that. However, we do want to contest the recommendation for the phase-out of Dusable Leadership. As we've indicated in our materials, we do have a very positive set of outcomes that we think matter in terms of the attendance rate, graduation rate higher than CPS, college acceptance rate higher than CPS, dropout rate lower than CPS. Last year, one hundred percent of our students were accepted into colleges to and for. This year, they're on board for one hundred percent going on to four-year colleges. We've got evidence of support from our parents by surveys that we've given, the CPS Consortium surveys, that show strong support from both parents and students. We currently have a hundred and seventy-five parent-initiated applications for the freshman class for 2013. We have submitted a plan, both in the documents that we've given you, I won't have time to address them right now, in terms of the transformations that we are currently putting in place, which are very much research-supported, and also to suggest that you look at some disaggregation of our PSAE scores. We understand, and looking back at the data, the trend from 2009 to 2010 and what accounted for that and what accounts for the decline in the latter two years, but would also suggest that in the 2012 data that twenty-six of our- excuse me, twenty-six percents of our students achieve scores in reading between eighteen and twenty-eight on the ACT. Some thirty-nine percent of the students earn ACT scores between seventeen and twenty-four, so that that composite-
Ms. Lee-
I'm closing out.
Ms. Lee, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
That the composite that you have masks the kinds of variation that's in those scores, and would remind the board that of the schools that you are renewing at the high school level, basically sixty to eighty percent of the students in those schools are scoring below the- are not meeting the expected standards. Finally, in closing, that all that we're asking for is the three-year, no difference in the timeframe, in order to meet a very explicit set of markers, and I have committed, I have served the district in many years in a number of leadership roles, and I'm committed to being there full-time to oversee the transformation, the practices that we have submitted to you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, can I ask a question? Dr. Lee, earlier this morning, I asked a question around the value of those graduation statistics vis-à-vis the PSAE and ACT score statistic, and the answer I got in part was, you know, you can influence graduation rates by grades, et cetera, et cetera, and that perhaps the question is, how are students doing once they- that they're not- you're graduating them not college-ready, which would suggest that they're not performing well in college? Do you have any data around the graduation classes and the students that have been admitted to college and how they're doing?
Well, the first thing I would say is that admission to college is not a subjective process. That is, that the students have to submit objective data in terms of grade point averages and the kinds of scores. Our kids, students, have four years of English, four years of math, four years of science, two years of Spanish beyond the state requirements. And all of those students who were accepted are going into colleges, and the data that we have at this point, I will say, is informal, but we do have students who do have come back to us, that come back with their transcripts actually showing that they are doing well in college. And I would add just finally that the opportunity to enter college is a significant life course opportunity that our school has provided that I think cannot be minimized, and when you look at the CPS system overall, that's a significant challenge, where you have some forty percent of kids, especially African-American males, who are not graduating and certainly not getting into college. And our argument simply is that we have the bones. We also say that the practices that we've put in place are ones that were acknowledged in the site visit as developing, and that they are based on strong research and best practices, and we know that we're in the position. And I am prepared to step in, as I have said. I'm an endowed professor at Northwestern University. I have done lots of leadership roles here in CPS, which I've outlined in some of the documents that I've given you, and I'm absolutely confident. I will say finally that we have indicators in terms of the work that we're doing right now in the test preparation work that's showing significant impact that we expect to see in the spring scores. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker.
Yes, Mr. President, with your permission, Speaker number forty-four, please, Robert House, regarding collegiate charter school, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert L. House, senior. I'm the pastor of New Life Baptist Church in the Roseland community, Vice President of the NEOMI Restoration Coalition, and I've been active in the community for the last twenty-five years in Roseland. I'm here today representing parents and grandparents who are concerned about the quality of education in our neighborhood. A quality education is the foundation that our kids need to rise above a life of crime and poverty. A life of good is being accomplished in our neighborhood, but there's room to get more done. Half of the students in our community are not graduating from high school, and this is something that must change. Our kids need a better foundation at their early childhood, primary, and middle school grades. I've been working closely with the founders of the Collegiate Charter School, and we know this is a school that will aid in meeting this need. I would like to thank you for approving them for the 2013-2014 school year. The longer we delay on making this decision and improving all the other schools in this neighborhood, the longer our kids have to wait. How long must they wait? They have been waiting long enough. With sincerest respect, I ask you to do the right thing for the children in Chicago and approve for the Collegiate Charter School and give priority to improving the quality of schools across the district, including Roseland, which is a very deprived area right now and certainly need some transformation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harad. Okay, that completes our public speakers. I invite the board to reflect on, react to, or respond to what we heard in public participation if they care to. Okay, seeing no comment there. I would ask the fellow board members if they have any questions about anything on the public agenda that they would like to ask of management for clarity before we vote. Anybody have any issues to ask? Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask Jack if he had any comments based on the folks from Shabazz who were- made any of the comments that you just heard.
I guess I would just say I don't think anecdotal data from the way that college success is good enough to say that you under the required standards and actually prepare for policies. So I think our concerns still stand. There are some good indicators, but not enough.
Hey, Jack, this is Andy. So you said there's indicators, but there's not enough. Can you just explain that a little bit more and also respond to Dr. Lee's comments about the plans they have in place?
Okay. I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
So you said there's some positive indicators, but not enough, so I need you to explain, to define that a little bit more. And then the second part of my question was, Dr. Lee addressed, said they have put some steps in place to address the concern, some of the concerns raised in terms of helping to drive to better performance. So my question is, why is that not enough? Or that's not really fair, but can you respond to that, her second part? But the first part was your comment on there's indicators, but there's not sufficient indicators.
Yeah. So to answer the first part of the question, I think there are certainly graduation rates, certainly grade point averages are a helpful indicator for students to get into college, and certainly some degree of success are predictive of some degree of success in college. It's not the case, though, that students- there's something that isn't matching up in the data between how the students are performing on the assessments and their graduation rates and their college acceptance rates. I think truly in the situation, so I don't believe and I don't think our process supports the idea that the grade point average is sufficient in and of itself and/or that it's objective. It's not. And so I think as we talk about ensuring that kids are prepared for college and prepared for career and for life, they have to be able to do some of the basic things that the assessments that our students take assess, and that is to read and to do math and to do some complex thinking. And so I think I would submit that while graduation rates and grade point averages are certainly important factors, they are- there's something that's not matching between those factors and how the kids are performing academically on independent assessments.
Okay, so before we get to their remediation plan, just one more question on the data. What about Dr. Lee's point about disaggregating the data, that the way, at least the ACT data, so the way that she's got, you know, forty percent, I can't remember the exact numbers, but she has a bigger percentage than you would expect doing over nineteen, I think she said eighteen on the end, so which would imply that there's another percentage that's doing really bad. So does that impact you at all, or does it matter?
I'd have to take a deeper look at the data. It's probably something that the team had looked at comprehensively. I'm not- I don't have it in front of me, so it's hard for me to comment on.
Okay, so then can you just address the remediation, you know, the efforts that the plans they've put in place that she's indicating she thinks will make a difference?
Sure. I think on the face of it, so one, I just want to say I respect Dr. Lee immensely, and I think the intervention- I'd have to take a deeper look at the data. I, it's probably something that the team had, had looked at comprehensively. I'm, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, so it's hard for me to comment on.
Okay, so then, can you just address the remediation, you know, the efforts that the plans they've put in place that they, that she's indicating she thinks will make a difference?
Sure. I think on the face of it, so, one, I just want to say I respect Dr. Lee immensely and, and I think the, the interventions they've put in place as a response to our team's findings are, are certainly research-based and certainly, I think, on the face of it, are good ideas. I think it, they are late in, in, in the progress, in the process. They came about in a year where they were up for renewal and not prior to that. And so, I think when we think about our, our accountability of, of all schools, and in this case, in charter schools in specific, and how it's our job as authorizers to ensure that all of our schools are high-quality, it's really challenging for us to say in the 11th hour when, when in a contract year, you know, schools decide to make drastic turnaround attempts, that that's enough to then justify, you know, a continuation of that school. And so...
Except the only pushback I have on that is that we admittedly have a process that set it up that way, right? So, I mean, that's what we talked about, is why we changed the process. So, for years, we've had a process that had, that, that set it up, that the critical year was the renewal. I'm not saying that's an excuse, I'm just saying that to have that be the reason, I have trouble with because that's the way we kind of set it up.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, so I, I can restate. There is nothing preventing a school from doing a self-analysis as it should, as every teacher should be reflective and every principal should be reflective about their data every quarter, every semester, every year, to be able to engage in significant strategies to turn around their performance much earlier than in the renewal year.
I, I understand that. So, okay, so my next question is really, because you didn't really address it, do you think that the remediation steps they put in place, if executed, will work?
I, I don't know, I don't think so.
Because?
Look, the, the, on the face of it, the remediation strategies are research-based. I think, given the school's past performance, we need to make, we need to make the tough decisions to make sure that our kids attend quality schools. And in this case, this is one of those decisions where the school has had a long history of, of poor performance and, and we need to make those tough decisions. I don't know if those, if those interventions will work, to be quite honest. I don't think we, I don't think, I don't think our kids can afford to wait for those interventions to, to take root right now. At least, that's the, the trend that the data suggests. And so, they, they are, we support our decision in light of that.
Okay, thank you.
No, except that I have not reviewed the remediation plan. I just simply haven't had time and I depend upon our people. And I would also defer in some degree to our, our chief accountability auditor relative to whether or not, through the response to Board Member Zop's question, in terms of readiness for college, I think there are additional factors, clearly not the factors of subjective grades. But be that as it may, it is, it is a recommendation we're bringing to this board for their decision.
I had a question from him before he sat down, because I was a little confused, because you stated that, you stated, if, I think, you stated that while they may get into college, the data we have don't show that they were ready. So, how did they get in?
You'd have to ask the colleges, I suppose. I don't, I don't know.
But then, do we have that same kind of data on, because you're making this assumption that the kids weren't ready, but they got into college? And are we doing that for the same for other schools? What about those kids who got into college? How do we know they were ready? Have we tracked these kids? We know they weren't.
Yeah, just go ask Cheryl at the community colleges.
You mean, we checked on the kids who went into, from Betty Shabazz into community colleges?
No, I thought your question...
Well, then, we need a whole list of them then.
We do do that with the district schools, Dr. Hines, and I think that the data that has been shared with us from the city's colleges does say to us that we are graduating, the university is admitting, and, and I'm not on the university side, so I don't know, but they are admitting children and then coming back to us to tell us, quite frankly, that our children, whether they're from Shabazz or from any of our high schools, are not ready. They, they're not ready at the performance level that the, the university would expect, which is driving us anyway, for our neighborhood schools, to ratchet up the standards, the, the overall instruction.
They can't afford the remediation costs any longer, frankly.
I'm sorry?
They can't afford the remediation costs.
Correct, exactly.
But let's just be clear that that's not, that group of students is not necessarily, the community college issue isn't the Shabazz issue, so I don't, we kind of veer it into that and I, I want to make sure that that's not what we're talking about. We don't, we don't have any data, you don't have any data at least that you're prepared to talk about today, about how these kids are performing in college. And neither did Dr. Lee, so it's, I'm not, I just want to make sure we don't mush this too far.
I misunderstood the question, I apologize, I answered the wrong question, Mr. President. I, I answered the wrong question, I suppose. I thought the question was, Andy, about the children who were in university and that weren't succeeding. And it wasn't specific to Shabazz, but a broader question.
It was, it absolutely was. I just wanted to clarify that because the original conversation was about Shabazz.
Yes, I just had a question. ASPIDA is ready to open another school. I read that in the report. In the phase-out process of Mirtha Ramirez, would those students be able to go to the new school and have a better option if that school has not worked? Is that a possibility?
In, I imagine it could be a possibility, as in any situation, students and parents have the choice to, to apply to any school, so...
When we say phase-out, how long will that take?
It will, so the Mirtha Ramirez will not accept a freshman class in the fall of 2013, and then year over year. So, next year, they'll have sophomore through seniors, the year after that, juniors and seniors, the year after that, seniors, and then they will graduate out.
One more thing not related to this, but Ames Middle School presented here, and I've met with several members of the community. One of the recommendations I wanted to make for a school and family engagement, to try to get a consensus of the community in terms of that, the option they want to pursue. I know the alderman is involved and also other members. So, it would be good, and, and my reply is, what's the consensus of the community that you would like to recommend to the board? So, it will be good if we gather that information in a different manner.
So, Collins, you knew, but we've been talking to all sides of that community about this issue for some time, actually.
They've mentioned that, I'm aware of that.
All right. Dr. Hines?
I move for the passage of motion number 13-0227-M01 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
Second.
Thank you, I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Hines?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
All right, we proceed to the closing. Meeting of Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with settlements. These items do require a vote. First report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Andrea Dalton, case number 04WC43466. Second report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Dan La Gacy, case number 10WC21666. Third report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Carol A. Leva, case number 09WC47910. Fourth report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Lola Moldanato, case number 11WC16666. The fifth report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Maria Vargas, case number 07WC49050. The sixth report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Addison Vasquez, case number 10WC47819. The seventh report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the settlement of Chicago Teachers Union Grievance Number 11-05100, brought on behalf of all teachers assigned to the Dean's School of Excellence for, for the 2010-2011 school year. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's. I will continue with other matters. These items do require a vote, and they are, first report, approved settlement of debarment proceeding against Frank Cooney Company, Inc., Kevin Cooney and Gregory Cooney by acceptance of voluntary exclusion and fine. The second report, debarment of Greg Victor, Rebecca Grespin, and Melinda Vendetti. And the third report, property tax appeal refund authorized settlement for D12P tab appeal regarding their property for tax year 2009. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with warning resolutions, and these items do require a vote, and they are, Audrey Davis, tenured teacher, Lakeview High School, Pantellas Liatos, tenured teacher, Lane Technical High School. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with items from the board. These items do require a vote, and they are, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Stephanie Reed, tenured teacher, assigned to Erickson Scholastic Academy. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that council has reviewed the record of notice, charges and specification in this matter. Stephanie Reed is hereby dismissed. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe Vice President Reese has a motion.
Yes, I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of January 23rd, 2013 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on January 23rd, 2013 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Saab.
Thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's, and I believe Board Member Zop has a motion, please.
I move that the record proceedings of the regular board meeting of January 23rd, 2013, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and such record proceedings be posted on the district's website in accordance with Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, I'll proceed with a roll call. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Board Member Zop?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's. I will now proceed with the public agenda items and only read the board report numbers since the titles in board reports appeared on the public agenda, and I will begin with resolutions and policies, and these items do require a vote. And they are RS1, 2, and RS3. Moving on to the policies, it's PO1. And for the record, I would like to note for PO2, that PO2 was draft on agenda and the final will be in the action. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the communication regarding the location of our next board meeting, and this is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, March 27, 2013, has been rescheduled to Wednesday, April 3, 2013, and will be held at the Central Administration Building, Board Chamber, 5th floor. The board meeting will begin at 10:30 a.m. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling 773-553-1600. For the April 3, 2013 board meeting, advanced registration will be available beginning Monday, March 25 at 8 a.m. and close Friday, March 29 at 5 p.m. or when all 60 slots are filled. And you could advance register during the registration period by the following methods, online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segment of the meeting will begin as indicated in the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than 60 registered speakers or the allotment of the two hours. I will continue with additional items, Mr. President, that do require a vote, and they are EX1 for the transfer of funds, EX2 for the Amandala Charter, EX3 for Architecture, Construction, and Engineering Charter School, EX4 for Asian Human Services, Inc., and EX5, I would like to note for the record, for the ASPIDA Charter, Char, I'm sorry, ASPIDA, Inc. of Illinois, board report. That board report will be revised and the final will be in the action for EX5. Moving on to KIP is EX7, will come back, Mr. President, for a separate vote on the Betty Shabazz matter. Moving on then to KIP, that's EX7, and I would like to note an abstention for EX7 for Dr. Ascoitia as well as Dr. Hines on EX7. Moving on to EX8 for the North Lawndale College Pre-Charter High School. Moving on to EX9, I would like to note an abstention for the University of Chicago Charter School for Board Member Penny Pritzker, and also an abstention for Dr. Beenan on EX9. Moving on to EX10 Uno, EX11 is the Young Women's Leadership Charter School, and I would like to note an abstention for Board Member Penny Pritzker on EX11. Moving on to EX12 for the Contract Schools for Amer- American Quality Schools, that's EX12. And then moving on to EX13 for the Contract School for Community Services West. And then one other item that we could vote on in this batch is AR1 for the Continued Retention of Hillaw Offices. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will go back now to the separate vote for the Betty Shabazz matter. This will be for EX6, and we are going to revise this board report and we'll be taking two separate votes, President Vitale. This first vote, President Vitale and board members, is for the renewal of the Betty Shabazz International Charter School. So, we will take a roll call on this matter, and then we will proceed with the second vote for the phase-out of the DuSabo Leadership Academy campus, please. So, this first vote is for the renewal of the Betty Shabazz Charter School. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I, I think I didn't know this earlier, but I should abstain because Professor Lee is a professor I know very well from Northwestern, and I had not made that association with Shabazz, so I think for me, I should abstain on the Shabazz votes.
Thank you, Dr. Beenan, we'll note an abstention for you on this matter. Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Ms. Saab?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
We have six i's, zero n's, with one abstention noted for the renewal on Betty Shabazz. And the second vote, Mr. President, then, will be for the phase-out for the DuSabo Leadership, and I will proceed with a roll call. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
I, I'm going to abstain.
You're abstaining, noted, thank you, Dr. Beenan. Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Hines?
No.
Ms. Pritzker?
Yes.
Board Member Zop?
No.
President Vitale?
Yes.
If I may note for the record, this matter does get approved, given we have four votes in favor of, we have one abstention and two nay votes. So, now, Mr. President, we will continue with the additional items on the agenda, and they are PR1, PR2, PR3. Moving on to PR4, I would like to note for the record an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR4 as well as Dr. Hines on PR4. PR5, PR6, I would like to note for the record an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR6. PR7, PR8, PR9, I would like to note for the record an abstention for Vice President Reese. On PR10, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese. On PR11, an abstention for Vice President Reese. Moving on to PR12, 13. On PR14, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese. On PR15, I would like to note for the record that PR15 has been withdrawn from the agenda. This is the board report for school specialty, and that will be... This is the board report for school specialty, and that will be withdrawn. The next item is PR sixteen. Moving on to PR seventeen, PR eighteen. On PR nineteen, I would like to note for the record an abstention for Vice President Reese. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections, Madam Secretary, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with items on the public agenda that do not require a vote, and they are MS one, ED one, EX fourteen, AR two. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark, receive, and file.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is so moved?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.